Candidate forums coming up, and you can find the full schedule out at the desk. We also have these handy-dandy vote As links to the League Voter Guide electronically, as well as resources. Take one with you, or take some to give to your friends. It also has information about checking your voter registration, and if anybody needs to register to vote, or update your registration this evening, we can help you before you leave. So come talk to us. So now, I would like to turn this event over to our moderator for this evening, Ellsworth Holden.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me go through some of the instructions and how we proceed. And if you don't hear this properly, someone let me know, because I'm a user, I'm not a technician. So you've had the candidates introduced, Bill Hayes on the left, Lenny Elias on the right. And I want to welcome Perry Smith of the Athens News, and I think Caleb Beard is here also from the news.
I'm just not here yet, that's why I'm sitting here. I'm going to take pictures once she shows up. I think she got stuck in traffic.
Okay, fine. And so, we're intending to have each of you ask a question. And so now, with our candidates, you'll each have three minutes for an opening statement. And we've chosen by lot earlier, and Bill, you'll go first, and Lenny second, and then we'll alternate down through. So you have a three-minute opening statement, and then we'll turn to questions from the media, a question from each media rep. And you'll have a minute and a half to answer a question, in alternating order. And then we will turn to questions from the audience. So, not just I, but we, League Women Voters members, and encourage all of you to put your thinking caps on, and formulate some interesting questions. And we'll wave, and pick them up, and come over here. We review them, to make sure that the question hasn't already been asked, and it's a fair-minded one, and they need to be answerable by both questions, and no gotcha questions, and so on. And so you'll have a minute and a half to answer each of those. And then, when we get to the end, we'll have a two-minute closing statement. And one of the things we ask is, no hand clapping. At the end, after each person's made a closing statement, if you want to clap then, okay. Otherwise, there's no cheering, there's no groaning, and this, that, and the other. Courtesy is the... I think the same name of the game, I can't think of any better, so I won't. Okay.
The order of the day.
So, Bill Hayes, let's start in with your three-minute opening statement.
Okay, since I'm not a public figure, I thought I'd start off with just a little bit of background stuff here, for those of you who don't know me. I hold a bachelor's degree with honors in zoology pre-med from Ohio University. I've completed coursework for, all the coursework for a PhD in molecular and cellular biology.
Can you leave the microphone and speak more slowly, please?
I've completed all the coursework for a PhD in molecular and cellular biology with a 3.83 GPA while working full-time at the university. Few tasks facing government are more important, from my perspective, than supporting education. I grew up in Meggs County, Ohio, and spent most of my childhood actually in the woods, carrying a muzzleloader and a tomahawk. It's kind of like Tom Sawyer in the 20th century, you know? I love the history of our region, and I'm passionate about this arboreal paradise. Working at a very early age. Put in square bells of hay, I've worked as a janitor, a steelworker, a maintenance man, a plumber, a financial advisor, special projects director at the university's scientific liaison, small businessman, truck driver, and much more. I've written spreadsheets and databases, done photography and computer graphics, and written sections for numerous federal and state grants and quarterly reports. Got to love those quarterly reports. I've had responsibility for the purchase of equipment and supplies in the public and private sector. I've worked with biohazardous and radioactive materials, done gene transfer in mice and fish. And I've made million-dollar roundtables in the insurance industry. Kind of hard to do here in southeastern Ohio, not much money. I've been to numerous festivals around the US, and have a drawer full of staff shirts from Working Halloween, right here in Athens. I understand and have hands-on experience in dealing with commerce, construction, tourism, academia, industry, and more. I know from decades of experience how planning, communication, cooperation, and attention to detail keeps us safe, controls costs, and gets the job done. Oh, and I still have all my fingers. I'm running for county commissioner, not to start a career in politics, but to bring my wealth of education experience to this very difficult job. More of us can share in the bounty of Athens, Ohio, and, at the same time, provide the funding to support our infrastructure. I know it won't be easy. I know it will take time, hard work, innovation, and lots of cooperation. I also know that if we put aside our differences and accept that we are all in this together, we can make it happen. I yield.
Good evening. I'm Lenny Elias, and I'm currently serving as your county commissioner since August of 1998. I have the knowledge, experience, and respect of my peers to do this job. I've been president of the Board of Commissioners for the past seven years. I'm a past president of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio, and the National Association of Counties. I helped found SEBCO, which is the County Employees Benefits Association of Ohio, which is a healthcare consortium that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings just for Athens County and counties throughout the state of Ohio. I'm currently the chair of the Athens County Economic Development Council, which is an economic development partnership between the county, the city, the university, and the private sector. I serve as the vice-chair of the Buckeye Hills Regional Council, and eight county development district, and chair of the Appalachian Development Corporation. I have a master's degree in public administration from Ohio University. Before being elected to be commissioner, I spent 20 years in broadcasting. My career covered sales, management, and ownership. Prior to my radio days, I was a franchisee for Domino's Pizza. I put the first stores in Cleveland, Ohio. After working my way through college, going to school full-time, and delivering pizzas at night full-time, I managed that store when I was a junior and senior in college. I have the experience in the private and public sector to allow me to see all sides of issues. We've seen more job development in the last couple of years through our efforts than we have in a long time in Athens County. You can look at companies like RXQ, Global Cooling, and Athens Molded Machine. They were featured on our Economic Development Council Familiarization Tour this past May. They plan on hiring between 200 and 300 people in the next couple of years, at better-than-average wages. Those are the kind of jobs we've been looking for, for a long time, to come to Athens County, besides jobs that were created at the university. We've been working with the Innovation Center to help small businesses start, and more opportunities being created. Our LIGHTS grant has exceeded our first-year expectations. They committed to have 10 new businesses, they have 14. They committed to train a number of new people, they've exceeded all those standards. It's going on for year two and three. So we continue to work with our partners to do small business creation and small business development, because we know it's a backbone of our economy. I want to thank the League for having this forum, and those of you that it took them time to be here tonight, or to watch, the opportunity to participate in this forum.
Thank you. Let me turn to the media for questions, and Caleb Beard of the Athens News, I think you've arrived since the earlier introduction, so, and we'll ask Steve, Rob, and the messenger for the first question, and then you, Caleb, for the second one. Steve?
This is sort of a downer question to begin with.
Use the mic.
This is sort of a downer question to begin with, I guess, but, next year, the county's going to have to deal with a loss of about, or more than $800,000 in sales tax revenue, because of the elimination of the sales tax on Medicaid services. I wonder what actions you favor taking to deal with that situation?
Huge blow to every county in the state, including ours, and it's definitely going to be challenging, there's no doubt about it. One of the things that we have seen over the last 10 years in the entire state of Ohio is a gradual rollback, sometimes in dramatic swipes like this, of funding from the state to the counties. And it's been difficult for all the counties to deal with, certainly for ours. We are at a time where we must become more resilient with our own local economy, we must do more to generate more economic activity that feeds our local funds, because we have found that the state is not reliable. Now, losing the MCO, that's a huge blow, and honestly, we're going to struggle to make that up, and we may face changing expectations. And any county in the state of Ohio that doesn't say that to their voters, probably isn't telling the truth.
The first thing we would look at is a freeze on positions, and potentially on raises. That's something we've had to do before, when we've had problems with sales tax or other revenue losses. The second thing you would do is not fill any optional positions. The next thing you look at is not funding optional services. There are a number of services that are done throughout the county that we do, that we could actually cut back on or eliminate, but we don't want to do that. We're presently looking at our options and our revenue for the next couple of months, and evaluating what the growth has been. That's one of the problems that we've talked about with the administration in the past, and with the upcoming administrations. We've met with both, and talked about how much they've severed the partnership between the county and the state. It's the tune of $350 million statewide that local government has lost in the last decade. So we've lost a lot of money, but we continue to provide the services that we've provided, and we'll continue to do so. We have mandated services that will be met. We've always met them in the past, and we'll continue to meet them as we move forward through this crisis. It's going to be a difficult time, but we have the experience and the knowledge to know what things we do, and we'll get the job done with those services.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up. The county has the option of raising the sales tax to 41%. Do either of you favor that?
We are actually one of the higher-tax counties in the state right now, and the most common complaint I've gotten everywhere that I've gone, everyone I've talked to outside, particularly in the city of Athens, certainly everywhere else in the county, is the tax issue. We're losing citizens. People are voting with their feet. I know personally, a great many number of young people, childbearing age, that work in Athens County and live in adjacent counties because of the tax structure. It would be very, very unfortunate, and certainly not in our long-term interest, if we increased pressure in that area. Unfortunately, as Lenny pointed out, with the MCO pulling back, we may be in an extremely difficult position, and have to look at other sources of funding. I certainly hope that it does not come to that. There are, as Lenny once again indicated, certain things that we can do, typical things you do in a situation like this. Hopefully-
Having tried to raise the sales tax once before, I would put it on the ballot for the people to decide if they want to let us do it. The last time we did it, they voted it down, we didn't do it. So, it's up to the people if they want to enact it, and you have to determine what services you want to receive. So we would lay out the case for it, and let the people vote and decide. You know, there are a lot of competing interests for the limited tax dollars we have. Our county engineer would like us to dedicate that sales tax to him for roads. I think if you talk to people around the county, you'll find overwhelming support for money for roads, but you also talk to people, and you hear that they want to piggyback sales tax off. So you can't do both. The sales tax goes for road construction and road maintenance. It doesn't go to general operating fund of the county, and people have to make a decision as to which they would prefer. So, this one would be up to the voters to decide. We wouldn't do it in the interim, because it would be subject to referendum, and that would make it wait till the next cycle to come out and vote on it, so it wouldn't be worth it to go ahead and enact it, and have it subject to a referendum. So I would put it on the ballot, if it comes to that, but that's a last resort.
Thank you both. Caleb Beard, your question.
Mine is also kind of a technical question. First, how do you feel about issue one? And what do either of you plan to do specifically to address the opioid crisis, specifically to address like addiction, and how are you servicing it?
Okay, issue one-
Well, I think, let's see, Lenny, you're first on this one, aren't you?
Yeah, I'm first on this one, okay.
Okay.
Issue one is well-intended, but the problem with issue one is that, when you put it in the Constitution, it's hard to amend the unintended consequences. I support, I have worked in behavioral health industry as well. One of my other jobs is working with health recovery services. And I understand what we've done is criminalize a lot of things that shouldn't be criminalized, and a lot of things across the juvenile, across the court spectrum. So I think what we, Steve Diddelbach put out the best answer I've seen so far, as far as issue one goes, is we need to have criminal justice reform. We need to look back and say, what's wrong with our criminal justice system, how it can be fairly applied, and go back to a justice system, not a punishment system. So when you look at, what happens with issue one is, the unintended consequences can't be fixed unless you have another constitutional amendment. The intention of it is great. We absolutely should be doing that, we need to fix what's going wrong with our country. It's not the possession that's the problem, it's the acts that happen after the possession that's a problem for the criminal element, and we have to make sure that the people that are in jail for that, they come out. The other problem with that amendment is, it's promising money to behavioral health from the state, and actually, the county is footing the bill for fourth- and fifth-degree felons. The state has already shifted that burden to us. They shifted it to us a number of years ago, so there is not a pot of savings that's going to come from enacting that, that can be earmarked to go to behavioral health.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, actually, I support issue one with grave reservations. We've tried the approach that we're using right now for about 50 years, it is not working. We have lost the world on drugs, and it has destroyed the lives of hundreds of millions of people around the world, many, many, right here in this county. I say with great reservations, I don't think it will actually pass, but I hope that it does send a signal to the state, and I agree with Lenny that we need justice in this state, not the approach that we're using right now, that criminalizes simple possession. If it does pass, I have sincere doubts that the state legislature is going to implement it. They haven't implemented the unconstitutional ruling for school funding since, was that 1999? So they've got a long history of ignoring the will of the voters, and the Constitution, and pretty much everything else. And Lenny's correct in the fact that they have shifted the burden, financial burden, to us already, and I don't know that they're going to, no, there's not going to be any magic pot of money suddenly appear if we pass this thing. So, it's not perfect, but we have grave issues with what we have, and I think we need to force their hand to make better decisions at the state level.
Thank you. So now, we'll turn to questions from the audience, and Bill, you'll be first to answer this question. Do you favor the proposed county charter, which received sufficient number of signatures to get on the November ballot, but was rejected by the county board of elections? Why, or why not, do you, do you favor?
I'm not going to get in the woods on the county board of election, I think they're wonderful people, I've had the best of relationships with them. The people seem to have indicated that they do want to get a county charter on the docket. There are 86 counties like ours, that are statutory counties in the state, there are only two, I think both of the other two are set up that way, aren't there, Lenny?
Summit and Cuyahoga.
Yeah, Cuyahoga, yeah. And honestly, I don't think that that has been out there long enough for us to get a good understanding of what long-term effect it has on the counties. It looks like they have some savings in some areas, not so much in others. And from the perspective of county government, it's all about the funding. You know, we have services, we have to provide, there's only so much money to work with. You know, we are an organism of the state. We are a local administrative body of the state legislature. That's, in effect, all county government is. So, it's interesting. I think that we do have some antiquated artifacts in our county government structure across the entire state, not just here. They do bear looking at, the charter may or may not be a better solution.
I would advocate for county government reform. I see a lot of things I would like to change about county government. I always get told that it's a power grab by the county commissioners, so that we want to do things. One of the things, I'll just give you a quick example, is that we should not elect coroners. Coroners should be appointed. The Ohio elects 88 coroners. Why do we elect 88 coroners, when we have six places we do autopsies? So, we ship them out, and we contract out to have our autopsies done. Why don't we have a regional medical examiner system like other states do? The county engineer is appointed in 45 states, he's elected in, or he or she is elected in five. Ohio's one of those five. The county engineer in most of the other states works for the board of commissioners or supervisors, depending on what state you're in, what your title is. They're called road superintendent, and they can be directed by the board. We get a lot of phone calls about the county engineer. The charter that's been placed in front of the voters has some issues. When you start talking about having a supermajority, trying to manage the decisions of the board of commissioners, that's going to create problems. What you have is a simple solution to get it on the ballot, eliminate the office of county coroner, make them appointed. We would appoint the same person that's already in there, at the end of their term, because you have a property interest in your term. It's a complicated system to fix it, but when you do it, you can do it right. The only two charters that have gone was because of corruption, not because of trying to do other things.
Thank you. Let's turn to the next question, and let's see, Lenny, you'll be answering this one first. Will you, as commissioner, continue to support the Athens County Soil and Water Conservation District?
That's an easy one. The, our C and D district just closed up, and I sat on the board of that, and this is one of the ways we're dissolving that, is, there's about $5,000 available to come back, and I made a motion to, at the officers' meeting, to give that money to the soil and water districts, because I think that's where it should go. As we dissolve that, and the final payout comes out, that's where it should go. Again, that's one of the places where we've been very supportive of that throughout the years in the county, and we'll continue to support it.
Once again, I'm pretty much in agreement with Lenny on this, you know, long history of being in the outdoors. I love the national environment, there is anything and everything we can do to protect our resources is of paramount importance. Nothing, well, you don't have life if you don't have water. It's that simple. You can't eat if you don't have soil. You know, they have to be taken care of. Once again, we have to look at the most cost-effective ways that we can go forward, especially considering the financial crunch that we're facing.
The Athens Mess, let's see, and, Bill, you'll be first on this one, so maybe that's established, I don't mean interrupt them every time. The Athens Messenger said that development of the Bailey's Trail system is estimated to bring in millions of dollars in new spending in Athens County. Do you support this Bailey's Trail system project? And how do you think the county should support the project, given that the trail heads will be on county and village land?
I fully support anything and everything we can do that will increase tourism opportunities and our ability to import dollars into this county. This one in particular has a lot of advantages to it, in that we are actually going to be able to leverage a lot of money from outside the county to help with the construction. I do have some concerns about the quantity of money, or the amount of money that might go to local labor, local contractors and everything, but once again, remember, county commissioners are at the mercy of the state, we have to follow state purchasing guidelines, we don't have a lot of leeway there. There is money in this, as I understand, going forward, to help with job training, and, you know, bringing some displaced workers into the system, and, as well as helping with economic development, local economic development, of some of the support opportunities will come up once the trail is in place. So, yes, I support it fully. I have concerns about the cost, as with everything we do, we have to look at the numbers. And whatever we do, it has got to be set up so that we have financial benefit coming back to the people of Athens County.
I support the Bailey system, as do the other commissioners. What the discussion has been mainly centered around is, who's going to pay for it? What you're talking about is an improvement on federal land, that the federal government wants to use a pay-for-success model to pay for this, and having other people pay for it. That's not typical in how pay-for-success models work. There's only one in Ohio right now that's in place, and that's in Cuyahoga County, it has a reduction of bed days. And what you're talking about there is, they're already spending that money. So when you talk about the Bailey's Trail, the people that have come in, qualified ventures, have talked about three primary payers, the city, the university, and the county. And if you want to take $5 million and divide that out by three, that's a pretty hefty amount of money. So what we've suggested to them, and the meeting's going to be tomorrow, is that the wayne can be to meeting with people from Washington County, from Hocking County, from Athens County, that haven't been approached yet, and we can sit down and have a discussion. Because you're going to see that the benefits are going to be spread by more than one county, and we shouldn't have all the burden of paying here in just one county. So the payers are going to get together and decide who's going to pay, and what role they should pay. We obviously can play a role, but it's not going to be a major role. The university can play a role, and it's not going to be a major role. The city of Athens is going to pay a role, but it's not going to be a major role, but we have to include the city of Nelsonville, the village of Bookdole, and the other places that are out there as municipal corporations.
Thank you both. Let's go to the next question, and Lenny, you'll be first on this. What are your top three goals, as you look to serve the county?
Number one is to finish the sewer project that's been in development for 22 years. We are hopefully going to bid in January. That is an interesting project, it's been talked about for a long time, it actually started before I got in office. The EPA issued findings and orders for that, the five subdivisions along Route 50, to get that done. So, we've been through the engineering a couple of different times. Right now, we're acquiring easements. We have about 100 easements acquired, we still have a few more to go. We're at 90% design, and so all systems are go to get it built. The only thing holding us back now is getting a bid that meets our bid estimate. So we'll see how good the engineer is, but that should go forward. Number two is to reduce the poverty level of children living in poverty. We have one of the higher county rates across the state, and that comes through better paying jobs and economic development. We've been working on that, continue to work on that. I referred to that in my opening remarks, about the jobs that are being created, some entrepreneur jobs, and some manufacturing-type jobs, and jobs that will pay wages that have healthcare benefits, so that families can get out of poverty. And the third one would be to continue to manage the county in a fiscally prudent manner.
Well, I'm going to sound a lot like Lenny on this one, but seriously, it's because we have very, very little choice in this county. Economic development is the first priority. We must do everything we can to support the growth of small and medium-sized locally-owned businesses, including farms, and we must do everything we possibly can to make the absolute best financial impact with the resources that we have available to us now. The state's not bringing us any more money. So, that we have to do. Second thing, we have basically a lot of 18th-century structural hangovers in the government and in the way that we operate in general. And here we are in the 21st century. We have got to understand that broadband, but more than just broadband, communications is a part of infrastructure, and somehow, we have got to find a way to at least be able to make a cellphone call when you drive out 550 to Amesville. You know, much less get kids on broadband, which is a terrible, terrible thing. We're not supporting them, most of them can't do their homework. The third thing, and this is due to public response only, we've got to find a better way to fund our road maintenance and repair. And that's tricky because of state restrictions.
Thank you both. Let's go to the next question. And, Bill, then you'll be first on this. How do you think Athens County could best prepare for a natural disaster?
Actually, I think we just had the Jobs and Family Services, the county home out there, declared a Red Cross Emergency Shelter, didn't we? That's just, what, a couple of weeks ago? Okay, now, sounds lovely, comes with a lot of financial challenges. We are going to have- We are going to have to, we have no recourse on this one. We're going to have to look to the federal government, I think, for any and every penny we can leverage from them to help us with respect to disaster preparedness. We have several agencies at the federal level that are charged with responsibility of disaster response and preparedness. And, you know, they've kind of gotten their fingers burnt here the last few years and hopefully we can use that opportunity to find some funding out there to help us bring our system up to date. We need, I think, one of the figures I've heard is we need $150,000 just for a backup generator, you know, a replacement generator out there. And there are a lot of problems with the building. It's going to take a lot of money. So, not sure it's a blessing or a curse, but it's something that we do need to do. I lived eight days through the last ratio without power at my house. It wasn't much fun. Really don't want to see anyone have to go through that again.
The number one thing we can do is educate the citizens on how to shelter in place and the things they need to survive for a couple of days, up to a week, whatever they can get prepared for. Because a lot of times with the disaster, it's not the initial disaster, it's the post-disaster response that causes all the problems. And so, you have to get through the initial disaster. We continue to operate and upgrade the 911 system. When we look at our emergency management system, that continues to have desktop drills. We're getting ready to do one in a couple of days related to Halloween. So, every year, we practice and talk about what responses are going to be. There's an ongoing process of education for the agencies and interaction and communication that takes place all the time. So, you continue to look at that. But we have to make sure people understand that they have to fend for themselves in some situations for a while before help can get to them. So, what's the best thing we can do is educate the citizens on how to be prepared, what they need to store, what they need to get to and how they can respond to the crisis.
Thank you both. Let's turn to the next question. Hocking County hopes to open a treatment jail for women offenders in need of addiction recovery service. How will this impact Athens's county court system? Will Athens establish a drug court also?
I'm lead on that one?
Let's see. Lenny, I think you're first on that.
I think I'll personally that one there. We have a drug court system already, so that's in place. I'm involved with the group that sits with the university and the discussions here that are taking place with revitalizing the Hocking prison. That the treatment center's been needed for a long time. It's not just going to be for women, but it's primarily for female beds at this point, but eventually they'll have male beds. One of the things they're talking about is coming to agreement with the regional, Southeastern Ohio Regional Jail about not financially damaging the jail when they take beds away and put them into the treatment system because the jail has to be able to be self-sufficient. So, that's part of the process. We've needed this type of facility for a long time. We've taken a couple of looks at it in the past and people have bailed. Behavioral providers have looked at it and found that they couldn't make it financially feasible. The fact that the state's going to lease this facility to Hocking County and provide some money for capital improvement will help it give a chance for success, but don't have to get used and developed and go on. But I think it will be beneficial for us all as we look towards having treatment. We wanted to do a treatment facility a long time ago, but we couldn't make the financial means work.
Okay. Once again, there's absolutely no way to say that we don't need this. We desperately do. We also need justice reform. We're sending far, far too many people, well, the people that we're catching and hitting with fifth-degree felonies are costing us far too much money. Any of them that we can divert to treatment and get them out of that problem area is a benefit not only to them, but to us financially going forward as a county. We're fortunate to have this coming into our area. My sincere hope is in the long term that it becomes a redundant facility, but there's no way to tell that at the moment. And Lenny does bring up a good point and that is unfortunate reality of unintended consequences. You know, you build a facility in one area, it impinges upon the operational parameters of another one and the funding, and that's an issue that we do have to deal with.
Bill, I think you'll be first on this one then. Can each candidate speak to his view of the land bank opportunity in the county and how each would approach its structuring and operations?
Okay. I think the land bank, basically, we don't have a great deal of flexibility in how it's set up. And as far as operation goes, it's funded from the money that we get from the late fees on taxes paid. So, we can't even really control the amount of money that we have to work with there. It's certainly something we desperately need. We have a great many abandoned properties and derelict properties in the county and that's driving down our tax base all over the county. It's not doing us any favors. I think that it's too early on at this point to, I think, change course with it. What we have set up right now, we should go on with, watch it, see what it does. But, you know, I was at a meeting down in Coolville about a month ago and the fact of the matter there, you know, the needs there, but there really wasn't much available in the way of delinquent, the delinquent tax penalty to fund anything in that area at that time. So, control over the flow of the money is an issue that brings great concern to me.
The land bank structure is pretty well dictated by state statute. So, the operation of itself, the determination of which properties to take is a function of the land bank. So, the board has to look at which properties are available and decide. The first requirement is they have to be vacant. So, that's a structure we've run into where we've had squatters in some of the properties we've looked at. We haven't been able to go after those. So, they have to be tax delinquent vacant properties that are blight. So, you just can't go out and take properties that aren't blighted. So, there's a lot of properties available to be looked at. We're looking at them. I think right now, we are up to about forty properties in the pipeline that have been okayed by the land bank to start doing the research on titles, on liens and all the other issues that you have to deal with before you acquire a property so that you don't acquire a property and then you can't get the liens discharged. Because the land bank, you know, take property, discharge liens that are available from tax purposes and delinquent water bills and things like that. So, then you can turn that back. We've taken a lot of steps through tax lien sales and now the land bank to make sure people start paying their taxes and that provides more revenue for all the taxing entities that are out there. And I think that's the biggest impetus that will provide the land bank. After a couple of properties get removed, you'll see more tax collections and tax collections go up and the burden gets distributed like it should be across everyone, not just a few payers.
Thank you. Let's turn to the next question and Lenny, you'll be first on this one. Is the county needed to reduce expenses due to state cuts? What optional services would you consider cutting?
You look at the first place, we have subsidies that go out to the county fair extension. Those are the first two places that are optional that we look at. Soil and water is one that you would have to take a look at, but the soil and water match that occurs from the state makes that a hard one to look at cutting because they can turn their money and turn it into 125% because they get a match from the state. When you look at services that are offered by the office holders, there are places in the sheriff's arena that you would look at, cutting back and scaling. One of the things you see is road patrol. You see a lot of grants out there that are matched by county funds where the sheriff can do road patrol. That's not a mandatory duty of the sheriff. So, you have to go back and look at each office holder's duties and examine those and decide which ones have the most priority. The interesting thing about county budgets is you can't do an across-the-board budget cut. You can't just say, "We're going to cut everybody by 10%." Because that's been adjudicated and the commissioners have been found lacking because we have to make sure we look at each office's requirements and what funds they would need. So, you have to do it in proportion to their responsibilities. You can't just say, "We're going to cut the budget by 10%." So, it's a long process and you can't just say, "We're going to do A, B and C." You've got to examine them each time.
Thank you. Bill?
Okay. In my introduction, I mentioned communication and cooperation and I've also indicated that we have some kind of archaic structures in our system, but we cannot change those. We are at the mercy of the state with respect to how everything is set up. So, getting to the different office holders, looking at anything that they can cut is really one of the best options that we have available to us. We don't want to lose any of the critical services in the county, obviously. There are some things that we've become accustomed to that are not perhaps as critical as others and those are the areas that we would have to look at first to try to make any savings. It's that simple.
Okay. We're ready for number 11. And this is the last question I have here. Are there some more in the pipeline someplace? Which is an invitation to stimulate the brains in this room, but I've only got one to work with at the moment. And so, let's see. Bill, you'll be first on this one. How should the commissioners take into account the views of county residents when making decisions?
Okay. Well, one of the things that I've mentioned several times is communication and cooperation. From my perspective, we serve at the leisure of the people here in the county. We have to be responsive to their needs. One of the basic precepts of government, which it sounds stilted and archaic, but actually, you know, I do adhere to the concept that we, as a government official, must see to the greater common good without trampling on the rights of the individual. It's something I think we need to keep in mind at all times. And I could point out several different instances in the past, people have approached me where they feel that their rights have been trampled on and it's a difficult issue. You know, you try to avoid anything like that from ever happening in the first place. If it does occur, redress is often extremely difficult, expensive and acrimonious. But we must be responsive to the needs of our voters and to their desires to a great extent. Once again, as with anything in county government, there's only so much that we are allowed to do by the state and budget controls virtually everything that we can do. So, all these things must...
We get feedback every day. People come in the door, they call, they write. You get competing views and competing opinions. You gather the information, you evaluate and you have to make the best decision you can. I tell people all the time that my job's like being a basketball official. No matter which call I make, half the people think I'm wrong. The people don't get the information that's favorable of them. They think you made the wrong choice, wrong decision. So, you're sensitive to what's going on. You look for the common good. You look for what's the best interest of the county. You look for what you're legally allowed to do. You look at what you can afford to do. You can't always meet every need and every desire. So, the goal is the overarching goal that we have and that's to make Athens County a better place to live, work and play. And that's what we think and that's our over prescription that we use when we make decisions is what are we doing to make the county better? Is this a good decision for the county? Is this a good decision for the citizens? Then you look at, is it a good decision for the state and evaluate if you should be rallying against the state or not? Is it fair to us to do what the state wants to do? So, we always look at what the interest is of the citizens. They don't always participate as much as we would like, but they sure participate when they want to. So, we'd like to see more of that and we take it all the time and I get people in all the time in my office and gladly welcome any feedback people want to give.
Thank you. Let's turn to the next question and Lenny, this will be yours first. What can we do differently to better combat the opioid problem?
Well, there's two things that can be, there's two quick things that can be done. One, the county is participating in the lawsuit that's being done against Big Pharma. We're one of the counties that joined the lawsuit to do that. Education is the biggest thing. You know, I'll use a personal story here. I was taking opioids for a surgery I had and I had complications from it. And it's a matter of how my body reacted to it and stopped taking them really quickly because my body reacted negatively. And when I hear about the number of people taking opioids, it's like, boy, how can you put yourself through that? But it's like any other problem with addiction. We have to educate. We have to keep people off of it. We have to take the money and get that around there. And the other thing we have to do is put people to work. A lot of times, I have a discussion with my wife about we should bring back the Public Works Program from the old days and put people to work and get things built again and put the money there and make sure that people are working because they'd be too tired to go out and get in trouble during the week. They go home and sleep. That's the thing we should be doing is getting them working and moving. So, when you look at it, there's no simple solution, no easy answer. You can't just wrap it up and say, "This is going to work." It's a long-term educational process. It's a process of building society back up again and making sure we stop the false claims that get made. One of the big problems with the opioid crisis is the federal government decided to use pain management as a criteria and that's how we got into this mess.
It's an incredibly painful disease. It manifests primarily or most severely in your late twenties. I've been dealing with this for decades now. Fortunately, I have a background in molecular biology and understand the actual basis of addiction, all the way down to the molecular level and receptors on the cell. So, I've been fighting a battle with my doctors and the entire medical community that I've brushed up against for decades now to avoid addiction to opiates. I've had everything you can think of prescribed to me. Don't fill them, don't take them. Lenny's right. I combat my disease with diet, exercise, routine. You know, the big thing is you keep moving. And he's also right, you know, wear yourself out. It's a great alternative to killing yourself. And, you know, I've dealt pretty effectively with this disease. I've been lucky. A lot of people aren't quite as lucky. If you have any concerns about that, please join me over at the city center. We'll work out together, you know? Try to keep up, you know? But that activity is the best prescription that I have ever found to avoid addiction.
Let's go to the next one and Bill, you'll be first on this. How do you plan on assisting those with difficulty paying for the sewer project?
Boy, that's a good question. It's going to hit a lot of people hard and honestly, I'm going to be right up front with you at this point. I don't have a good response to that formulated, you know? One of the things I did as a financial advisor was, and I've worked at that for four years here, I had to deal with a lot of people that were in dire economic straits and run a lot of budgets in other areas as well. And it's going to put a strain on a lot of people. And honestly, I haven't seen a good proposal put forward yet that addresses all the issues around that. Sure, we need clean water. Absolutely. It's a critical need. The sewer system has been so long in coming that I don't think any of us could stop it if we tried. You know, I think we're 23 years into it now, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay. Coming on 24, I believe. And you would think in that time that we would have been able to formulate a good solution, but it's a complex problem and the fact that we've been working on it for 24 years without a good solution to the cost of it sort of bears that out. So, honestly, don't have a great solution right now. Wish I did.
One of the solutions is education. We found this out when we had the Bookdole Sewer Project. One of the calls I got was from a longtime friend of mine. He said, "You know, my sewer bill's outrageous." And I said, "Tell me about your water use habits." They do laundry three times a day. They do this, they do that. They fill their pool. They do this, they do that. And I said, "The first thing you got to do is start looking at how you consume water because your sewer bill's directly related to water." So, a little bit of education will help. When it comes to the actual connection costs, we're going to be bidding out, as we did in other sewer projects, a joint group price so that people can take advantage of that. It's not required. They can get their own contracting price. I've already heard people saying it's going to cost us $15,000 to connect and get rid of our septic tank. I've never had a case of that. That's just a contractor trying to gouge someone right at this point in time. When you looked at the last one that they did in the Coolville project that the village did out there, those ran about $4,000 for everything that people needed to do to connect. It varies based on how people are connected, how close they are to the sewer line, but we will continue to do that. We also have a minimum bill so that minimum usage is a minimum price.
Thank you. The next question, why, Lenny, you'll be first on this.
everything that people needed to do to connect. It varies based on how people are connected, how close they are to the sewer line, but we will continue to do that. We also have a minimum bill so that minimum usage is a minimum price.
Thank you. The next question, why, Lenny, you'll be first on this. What are your thoughts...
...for years. The mayor and I have had discussions for a long time about how we can do this. We're trying to look at what you can do to expand transit. It's important. We've helped fund personal transit through contracts with HABCAP, which is Job and Family Services. We do it through the Senior Citizens Levy. We put money towards transit so people have a chance to use it, to get the medical appointments, and get around those in need, especially the seniors who have the biggest problem with transportation. But we're looking at the possibility of running a test route to expand daily transit service between Nelsonville and Athens, a couple of times a day, out to Albany. Eventually, you'd have to go to Coolville and Gloucester, but you got to do that next test leg and see if it'll get up there. We subsidized the beginning of the service to go out to the plains a few years ago. That's now a regular feature of the service so we can get people out to the workstation, over to Job and Family Services, and back into town. So people come to Athens, which is the core for most of their services. We have to find a way to get the people from the rural parts of the county back in and back out on a reasonable basis. One of the things that you'll see is there's a potential for a quarter percent transit tax, which would be a long-term funding solution that would be available. But the only way you're going to get that passed is to demonstrate that it's going to be out there all over the county. I remember the Aorta days. We like to recreate Aorta, but we're going to have to do it on a place where it'll be self-sufficient in this case.
Actually, I pretty much support everything that Lenny said, but there is an interesting thing that I had not personally considered until a local contractor approached me, and this is the tie-in between transportation or lack thereof in this county and the opioid epidemic. Most of the people that do get popped there end up losing their license immediately, and they have no recourse to get it back. They're stuck in a system where they can't get to work at that point, and there are people in this county who would hire them. I mean, menial labor, but it's something. Keeps them busy, you know? Best possible thing you can do to help them. They can't do it because they don't have transportation. It's a critical need. I would hope that we might explore that as a possible funding avenue. Honestly, don't know what agency we'd go to for that one, but it is, I think, a crucial tie-in to rehabilitating a lot of these people. And if we can find funding in that area, hopefully, we can co-tell that into some of our other needs and put together a pool of funds that would address all of these issues and provide something more like Aorta again, hopefully with a more robust schedule.
Thank you. I guess we're ready for the next question, and Bill, you'll be first on this. Fracking waste continues to flow in Athens County. What steps do you think can be taken by the county to ensure that fracking waste does not impact the water or other systems?
The county, once again, is a creature of the state. We are allowed to do only the things that the state legislature allows us to do, much as we might like to do other things. This is unfortunate, and it's one of the reasons why many people are pushing for home rule, and I certainly do understand that. Fracking scares the bejesus out of me, you know? I mean, water is one of the most critical needs we have. At the same time, we don't control the state's rules on commerce. That's unfortunate, but that is true. As far as what we can do to protect ourselves from any existing injection well, there is literally nothing. The science is totally out on this. We have no idea, long term, what it's going to do to the aquifer anywhere. There are certainly a lot of anecdotal evidence that it has destroyed the aquifer in many areas, so it's a frightening concept. But once again, unfortunately, the county government is essentially powerless to go against the state, and they're ruling on commerce in the state.
Bill's right on. I can't say a whole lot more. ...candidate will dictate who the head of ODNR is. So one of the things you want to do when they're out there is ask that question because they're the ones that set the tone for the state. Until you get the legislature to change the law and bring it back to where we can regulate it at the county level, which will be very difficult to do, or get the federal EPA to say Ohio no longer has supremacy, which is another long battle. Because when you look at the regulation of injection wells, the reason there are injection wells in Ohio and growing at a faster rate than in Pennsylvania or West Virginia is it takes much longer to permit a well in West Virginia or Pennsylvania than it does in Ohio because the federal EPA regulations that take place in those states make it a long process. It takes about three times as long to permit a well as it does in Ohio. So the regulations are out there. They have to be used, but we don't have any ability to make them do anything differently at this level.
Thank you. Here's number of questions. I'll call it question 16. I have a number and maybe you haven't. And also, the last one I have in my hands, and I don't see any in the incoming stream.
Well, we can talk about our favorite colors or something, you know?
This is a long enough one. I'm going to read it twice. So, let's see. And Lenny, I believe you'll be first on this one. Is it not true that among the roots of the opioid crisis are medical, physical problems, injuries and illnesses, depression, discouragement? If so, how can the county work more proactively with area health professionals to find solutions? So I'll read it again. Is it not true that among the roots of the opioid crisis are medical, physical problems, injuries and illnesses, depression, discouragement? If so, how can the county work with more proactively with area health professionals to find solutions?
Most of that falls under the Bailey Wick or the 317 Board because that's where the arm of the county that would deal with that behavioral health. But the county prosecutor has a Vipratol program that he's had 69 graduates of that keep people, get them off of drugs and keep them off of drugs. That's another place we've put funding towards to do that. We continue to work, and it's really cooperation and working together. But again, there's not a lot that we do as a county general fund operation. That's really where we look at the 317 Board to deliver those services related to that.
Okay, going back to a previous question and drawing on my four decades of experience, one of the best things we can possibly do to try to bring that under control is to have a better transportation system in this county, do everything we can to get people that have been impacted busy, get them work, keep them moving, distract them. And as far as the injuries and all the health-related issues, we can't do anything about that. I wish we could wave a magic wand and make everyone injury-free and certainly improve my health. I'd like that, you know? But, once again, we can't do it. We're doing a great job, I think, in a lot of areas. Improving access to transportation and employment is probably the next best thing that we can do to try to impact those issues.
Thank you. Before we go to the closing statements, let me see whether Steve Rob or Craig LeBeard happens to have another question he or she'd like to toss our way.
Mr. Doc, while back creating a county parks department, is there something that you'd be in favor?
Me first, me first.
Oh, who's first on that one?
Let's see, this ought to be, Bill answering first.
Okay, that's kind of a loaded question when you look at our budget. But absolutely, honestly, I would love to see us have more control over the hodgepodge of organizational structures that we have dealing with recreational opportunities and properties in the county. Beyond that, I think, and Lenny touched on this with the Bailey Run Project, I think this is the direction that counties all over Southeast New Hampshire are going to be heading in the future. We need to take a more regional view on a great many of our recreational opportunities, not just because of the fact that some of them do cross-county borders, but it's the flow of both the funding and the benefit, you know, the financial reward for those opportunities. And so, saying that we should have our own park board, it would have to be within the context of understanding that recreation has changed dramatically in the last 20 years, and, you know, our support for it, our utilization of it, and access to it by people outside of the area have changed dramatically, and we need to update the concept of how we manage that.
We're getting close to having to create a park department. Creating a park district is a different story. Those are two different things and two different concepts. Creating a park district would require the appointment of a board by the probate juvenile judge, so that's a whole different taxing district and a different set of people doing the responsibility. So I haven't been in favor of abdicating that, but financially, we're not in a position to add staff to create that, so we still do it within ourselves. But when the financial wherewithal reaches us, we will be creating a park department to manage that in a much more professional manner.
Thank you. Caleb, you happen to have a question?
I was curious, how do either of you feel about the issue of establishing zoning regulations in the plains?
The plains should have been zoned 25 years ago to create what, prevent what's happened now. But when you look at zoning and what's happening in the plains, I've said this for a long time, it should be done at the township level because the township is closest. To institute countywide zoning for the county, remember, you're saying you're going to have land use the same in Ames Township, in Athens Township, or not, in the unincorporated areas of Athens Township. But in Ames, Athens, York, Troy, you'll use land the same because the county regulations will be the same. And I think you'd go to the township level and say, "We have a more agricultural township. We have more of this in the township," and let the township decide what they would like to do. The problem with the plains is it goes over two townships. So you have two boards of township trustees that have to come up with a parallel plan. The real solution in the plains is for the plains itself to incorporate and then give their own government and their own determination. They would be able to take care of all the issues related to the development there. The other thing that you talk about is policing power at the township level. So again, that's something they could do with contracts. They could actually change the structure. I know one of the township trustees is starting to circulate a position to change the lands, all that's in one township versus the other. That'll be a long process to see what happens.
Okay, once again, this issue, as Lenny has indicated, touches on some of the organizational shortcomings that we have in county government. The fact that that is split between two townships is a really good example of that issue. And one of the tragedies of government at large is that we don't have the ability to look at the consequences of our actions or, more accurately, in this case, inactions down the road. We all saw, as Lenny indicated, this issue coming years and years ago, as the population and density continued to increase in the plains. We knew that there would be a great need for services. It was pretty blatant that everyone could understand that we need zoning a long time ago. But because of the structure that we have, there was no way to implement that by fiat from the county level. And certainly, in any case, you have to respect the local population's wishes and considerations. And as Lenny pointed out, we have a, it's kind of like a miniature country here. We have little fifes all over the county that are defined by the reality of their land, land usage, population density, and resources. All of these things have to be taken into consideration.
Thank you. I think it's time to turn to our closing statements, and I have to chuckle because there's always a chance I will forget to do it, but I haven't. But I recognize there's a chance I will. And so, this will be two-minute statements, and alternating the orders. Bill, you'll go first.
Okay. The first thing you learn in studying biology, which I have, is the only constant is change. This fact permeates every aspect of our lives and is the reason why we have elections. As a county, we face significant challenges, particularly in the area of funding as the state legislature continues to issue underfunded mandates. Going forward, we can wring our hands about this, or we can innovate and strengthen our local economy to generate the funds to meet our obligations. We may as well pursue this course since the state really isn't given us any choice. Fortunately, we live in a resource-rich county. We have a high university, Hocken College, as well as the natural beauty that we take for granted because we live here and see it every day. That's just a few of the assets. We have an entrepreneurial spirit around here that can, that has, over the last few years in particular, generated a great deal of business activity and new jobs. We need to work with everyone in these areas and using these resources to strengthen our local economy, increase economic activity here in the county by locally-owned businesses in order to lessen the pressure on county government to raise taxes. One of the hardest things I had to do as a financial advisor was look across the desk and tell someone, usually a widow, that they could afford to eat or they could afford to pay their property taxes, but they had to pick one, you know? And going forward, this is, getting a handle on the escalating tax issue is something that we must do. People are voting with their feet. Young and old are leaving the county because of the tax issue. Vote, and more importantly, your help after the election to make this happen. It will benefit you. It'll benefit your neighbors. It'll benefit your children, and it will benefit the county because we all are in this together, and we can change for the better.
...to hear the questions and understand the things that are on people's mind, I want to close with just one thought. When you vote on November 6, remember, there's only one candidate with the knowledge, experience, and respect to do this job well. Proven experience serves you best, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I want to thank all of you, candidates, folks, and your assets. We've worked you hard, these citizens have this evening, and you've done very good, very well. And I must say, I'm always delighted when you honor properly the timing because most of the world doesn't know that. We always do, and it makes my life easy not to have to gently come in and say, "Two minutes means two minutes and two seconds," and nothing more. Caleb Beard and Steve Rob, thank you very much. I want to thank Leslie Fleming and Ellen Girl for processing those questions.